Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Waukesha County Council Meeting for June 14th, 2016. Could we have the roll call, please?
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Yeah.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Sut Paul Sidoo.
Here.
Carl Weimer.
Here.
Okay, please rise and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take just a moment to have a moment of silence for the victims and the families of all those who are affected by the tragedy in Orlando. So if you could just join me in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Announcements, if you have your cellphone with you, please put it on vibrate or off. If you're going to be handing out any paperwork during public hearings or the public open session, please provide a copy to our clerk or our files. We have eight sets of minutes to approve this evening. Number one, Special Committee of the Whole for the morning session of May 3rd, 2016. Special Committee of the Whole for the afternoon session for May 3rd, 2016. Committee of the Whole for May 3rd, 2016. Board of Health for May 10th, 2016. Special Committee of the Whole for May 10th, 2016. Special Committee of the Whole for May 17th, 2016. Regular County Council for May 17th, and Surface Water Work Session for May 24th. Does anybody have anything that need pulled out? Okay?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, we have a special presentation of the Behavioral Health Revenue Advisory Committee.
Good evening. I'm Judy Seals, and I'm a public health nurse at the Waukesha County Health Department, and was invited here to tell you a little bit about the Nurse Family Partnership Program by the Behavioral Health Revenue Advisory Committee. So the Behavioral Health Revenue Advisory Committee has been a backbone funder of this program. The Nurse Family Partnership Program is an evidence-based program. There's been 30 years of research to demonstrate its outcomes. The primary outcomes are around pregnancy health and outcomes, child development and well-being, and economic self-sufficiency. But there are also longitudinal studies that demonstrate that it's a proven prevention program for youth substance abuse and mental health. So the Behavioral Health Revenue Advisory Committee came in as a funder when we first brought it into Waukesha County in 2012. So this is a program that pairs a nurse with first-time pregnant women, and during their pregnancy, they enroll in the program, and there's intense visit schedule until the child is two years of age. And there are just such fabulous outcomes that have been demonstrated in showing this program throughout the country. But we're also seeing that here in Waukesha County. It's been really exciting. It's something we've wanted to have here for quite some time, but it requires quite an investment. So we needed to have funding from the state level, local level, Behavioral Health Fund, to really put this together, so we can pair these nurses with vulnerable first-time moms, and have them, coach them, and provide the support needed for health and well-being. So we've first started implementing the program in 2012, and started graduating families about a year ago now. And so about 60% of the families get all the way through to graduation and to see what some of the accomplishments that those families have made during the tenure, the time that they've been able to establish themselves and really create some self-sufficiency, to demonstrate their ability to nurture their children, and really understand how they need to be, that safe, secure base for their children, has really been a delight to see, and something that we look forward to bringing to more families here in Waukesha County. As we've done our outreach plan, we've really referred to the community health assessment as far as which pockets in our community are most vulnerable, and have been really deliberate about trying to do outreach to communities that have families that are more likely to be struggling. So we've developed some fabulous relationships with some of our school districts. One of our primary populations that we're trying to serve are the young mothers, so those that are still in high school and pregnant. The counselors are now, no, we need to refer these young girls to the Nurse Family Partnership for support during the program. So we have some great relationships with school districts, relationships with other community providers and healthcare providers that are recognizing the value of this program.
This sounds like a great program. How does a mom get eligible for this?
So the qualifications are that it's the first time that you'll be parenting, that you're low-income, and that you live in Waukesha County. So those are the only eligibility requirements. We do have, so each nurse can only carry up to 25 families, and so we currently have slots for 60 families. And when we look at the Nurse Family Partnership being a national program, we continue to get support from the National Office, and they have analysis as far as the demographics, what a population should be able to support for Nurse Family Partnership, and they would project that our program should have capacity to serve about 100 families, reaching those most vulnerable. So we hope to find additional funding sources to continue to expand. At this time, we do have a waiting list, but we get referrals from all sorts of service providers, healthcare providers, and occasionally, we get calls from women who've heard about it.
So we have 60 families in the program right now?
We currently, we actually just received an expansion grant. We have 46 families currently, and we just applied for an expansion grant to Thrive Washington in partnership with the Lummy Nation. So we're doing a specific outreach within the Lummy community to fill those extra slots. So we have capacity for 60, but we're now building up because we have a new funding source. We just hired a new nurse.
And did you say there was a need for 100, or what was that 100 number that you used?
Correct. So we have capacity for 60, and when we look at the projection of what our community risk is, that we would project that we should, that we hope to have capacity to serve 100, which would be two additional nurses.
Two, so what does that cost?
So it would be about, so if we look at the administrative support that's needed in addition to the nurses, so it's roughly about $110,000 per nurse annually.
Well, it is budget time, so it's a timely presentation.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend you, first commend you on the work, and also I noticed in your materials that you've identified that every dollar we spend is estimated to save us between three and six bucks going forward, which is always a good way to present these things.
Yes, and so that's not, that's savings across systems. So again, it's a pleasure to implement a program that's been so well researched, because the work's been done for us to demonstrate criminal justice savings, education savings, actually increase tax revenue, because families that participate in our program are more likely to enter the workforce and contribute to that. So savings across systems, mental health systems, substance abuse, has been looked at, and just in Washington State, they had, they estimate that it's $5 to $7 savings per dollar invested for Nurse Family Partnership.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, my point in bringing that up is I'm a great supporter of early intervention. I think the, for the social value alone, but also from the fact that it's just economically the right thing for the community to do as well, is intervene early when we have these issues, so that we don't end up with a cascading set of problems we have to deal with later on.
Well, I wholeheartedly agree, and I think that we were really glad that the Behavioral Health Revenue Advisory Committee recognized the importance of early prevention as part of their portfolio, and not only treatment and near-term prevention. So I think that this was pretty insightful of them to recognize that an early childhood program fit in their portfolio. So we're really happy to have the Behavioral Health Funds as part of our funding package.
Ms. Brenner?
Hi, that was cute.
It's a good chance every time I say Ms. Brenner.
That was good, very good. Okay, you said in your working with a national agency, what is it?
Yes, so Nurse Family Partnership is a program out of Denver, and they have a National Service Office that supports programs that are implementing the Nurse Family Partnership. So for us to call ourselves a Nurse Family Partnership program, we have to follow the model as identified, and we receive consultation from the National Office to support our implementation. And so they continue to do research and provide tools for our nurses, and create the curriculum, and also provide technical assistance to us.
And is this kind of a rebirth of the WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children that was around years and years ago?
WIC is still around, and that focus, it is. So that focuses on nutrition, and it is an office-based program. So they both serve children and families, but this really focuses on the health and well-being, and really focuses in on the parent-child relationship, and also the self-sufficiency of the family. So one of the things, the principle of the Nurse Family Partnership is to follow the client's heart's desire, is the language we use, but it's really helping to them to develop goal-setting behavior and really, and learn how to reach small incentives and then longer-term goals, which is, I think, one of the pivotal pieces as far as the long-term success of the program.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. That's a great presentation.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, we'll move into our public hearings. Those who have signed up at the back prior to the beginning of the meeting will be called first. If you weren't unable to sign up, we will allow you to speak, and you should come forward at the end. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record. We will give you three minutes to speak. You'll get a warning at 30 seconds, and then time will be called when the three minutes are up. So as the sign-ups are coming forward. Okay, so our first public hearing is on Waukesha County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 7, Economics. Staff have anything at all for us? Okay, no staff report? We will open the public hearing. The first person signed up is Wendy Harris.
Wendy Harris. First of all, I just wanted to make a special thanks to Carl and to Barbara, because they both included new policies that address people that are more disadvantaged and need help. And I really think that's really where our focus should be, on economic development. The people who are already successful, they don't need our help. It's the people that are struggling that need our help. And if you look at the GMA, and I know I did send you a letter, it does, it does put some emphasis on taking care of disadvantaged people and disadvantaged communities. So, and I know I always come up here and complain about incentives and blah, 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 but when we talk about taking care of people who need some help, I'm very happy to see our tax dollars spent that way. So I do support that. I did like the new provisions I saw regarding the local food system. There were some good policies in there. My only recommendation would be maybe if we could flush that out a little more. Some of the things were very general, and I know this is big policy, but I didn't quite understand exactly what, you know, some of it meant. It all sounded pretty good. I think that's also something really important to do. I mean, we're going to have some major changes in the next 20 years with climate change, and moving towards a local food system, where we're growing food for our own people, and making sure it's safe, and, you know, we're taking care of ourselves. Our basic needs is really important. What I don't support are the programs to create a new business board, I don't remember the name of it, you know, references to Waukesha Futures, and things that involve, you know, basically help for large businesses. I think that the business community, the private industries, need to take care of themselves. They have the Chamber of Commerce. They have the money and means to do those kinds of things. In particular, I'm very concerned about this growing emphasis on outdoor recreation, because we assume it's something that's just great, that's going to bring money into the community, and there's no downside. And in fact, you know, in the course of working on the critical area ordinance and doing research, there is tremendous ecological damage that is caused from outdoor recreation. And I'm talking about things like bird watching, taking nature photographs. Things that are really that gentle and benign have significant impacts. And one of the more troubling findings, and we're talking hundreds of studies, is that people routinely underestimate the impacts that they're having on wildlife. So I, the concept of ecotourism is a little bit better. I don't know why we got away from that and got towards outdoor recreation. Ecotourism can also have impacts, but at least the idea is we're going to be trying to stand back and not damage the environment and scare away animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go too far away, because you're going to be up next, I think. Anyone else have any, want to talk about Waukesha County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 7, Economics?
I was going to wait till the end session, but this will do too. Max Perry, Waukesha County, and I just want to commend you folks, all of you, on the Special Committee of the Whole that met this afternoon. And you were very encouraging on the discussion of the recruiting of businesses for Waukesha County. And I think it's applaudable, and I think it's due time, and it's a good time to start. There's all upsides to it, good living wage jobs, good tax base for the county. Our son-in-law and daughter, in January, bought a large store in Mount Vernon. If you've been in downtown Mount Vernon, it's similar to Bellingham. It's a lot of vacant things on it, and the businesses are, the brick-and-mortar stores aren't what they, what they used to be. But they had a vision, and the Skagit County, the Mount Vernon services and permitting people, met them at the store in January, and they told them what their vision was, what they were going to do. And the folks down there, the planning folks, said that it looked doable. They made some suggestions on it, and took it into account. And they were also making a living space in part of that store. So it's not a, not just a common upgraded store business on it, but it was a total remake on it. And they just got their occupancy permit last week. So that's from January till June, I guess, last week. So it's phenomenal. What's helping down there in Skagit County is that they've got a culture of pro-business, helping business, not putting roadblocks in, but helping them. And I think until we get that, that culture here, but I think you guys started that today. And I think that's commendable, and it's great, and I just say, keep it up, and I thank you for it.
Max, I have a question. One question. Who was it in Skagit? What agency or what?
It was Mount Vernon. It's the Mount Vernon.
No, but I mean, who was the one that helped them through the process?
It was their planning department. They went down there to get out a permit and tell them what they wanted to do. They all came to the store in January. The whole department came to the store, the fire inspector and everything, because that's a big issue down there, and, which it should be. And they all met and discussed what they were looking to do, and it's just, it's just worked out. They got their occupancy last week, so it's just great.
Thank you.
Carol Perry, Waukesha County. I didn't, somehow I didn't realize that there was a hearing. I was going to do this in open session, but it seems to fit here. I thought of a little saying, "Nothing breeds success like success." And I just wanted to tell you from a citizen point of view, how I was affected by something that I witnessed here. I think the high point of my experience in this chamber was when you brought in businesses that were in the county. It absolutely blew my mind. I live about a few miles from Trivan, and I went by there, but I really didn't know what they were all about. Our company dealt with a chain company, but I didn't, you know, the presentations, the little company in Glacier that has, that does $25 million of business. It just, it blew my mind, to the point where I went to the fellow afterwards, and I said, "Why don't you let everybody in the county know what's going on in our county?" And I know this goes over and over and over again. It's not just, you know, three little companies, and you've heard, and you're parts of other companies. But I think if, if people had a vision of what goes on in this county, it would just, it just blows your mind. In fact, I went to the fellow from the port, and I said, "We have a small business, and I'm just, I can't, I can't under," I didn't know all these businesses were here. And so they made a list of businesses, of things that are even manufactured. And I said, "We have a small business out in Ferndale," and the fellow said, "Oh yeah, I know Josh. That's our youngest son who was involved in the business then." And it made me feel like, wow, these guys are on the ball. So because of the discussion that you had this afternoon, I think, like Max said, there's a ton of potential. And the people in Waukesha County, we just came back from Eastern Washington a couple weeks ago, and we were amazed at the building and the vibrancy of Franklin County there. So anyway, and, and our kids.
30 seconds, please.
Stayed with us for a few months while they were doing this, and I couldn't believe that they got their occupancy permit for this, actually triple business in this building, and actually a residence as well, in the short amount of time. It's attitude. Doesn't cost money, I don't think. It's the attitude that we want to help businesses. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on Chapter 7 of the Comprehensive Plan? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move to our next public hearing, which is on Waukesha County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 10, Design. Again, no staff report, I assume. So we will open the public hearing, and we will ask Wendy Harris to come back.
Wendy Harris, I sent you an email this morning, and so I suspect most of you haven't had a chance to read it. "After reading the design standards in Chapter 10, I'm at a loss to understand why the staff is requesting the removal of this chapter. Transfer the historic preservation items to Chapter 2, if you believe that makes more sense. But many of the other policies in this chapter are found nowhere else in the comp plan, despite staff's assertions to the contrary. The plan notes that the elements which define a sense of place, and which are particularly essential to examine, protect, and enhance are places, spaces, focal points, gateways, corridors, connections, edges, and transitions. All of these are perceptual elements common to most every natural or built place. They are among the most important and dynamic elements of an environment, which enable us to distinguish, qualify, and identify one place as separate from another, yet related to the whole. I see no reason to abandon a comprehensive design scheme that will prevent some of the hodgepodge incompatible development that exists in part of the county. I particularly like the emphasis on the importance of natural resources. In particular, I find these goals important to retain. Goal 10H: Encourage limiting impacts from resource uses on the natural environment. Goal 10J: Minimize conflicts between different land uses. Goal 10K: Consider long-term effects of building practices on communities and natural resource depletion." That, to me, interests me the most, because it's actually the most revolutionary in terms of what we've been talking about so far, and where we've been going. And I've made it very clear, and I'm frustrated, that we haven't been dealing with the fact that we have finite and dwindling natural resources. And this is the first time in anything that I've looked at, that I've even seen reference to that. And I think it's something that it's really important that we look at and retain. I think there's other things that are great in this. The idea of corridors and buffers. If we're developing from scratch new, it's so much easier to keep in and retain habitat corridors, scenic corridors, and also corridors for health.
30 seconds, please.
One of the most important things I think we need to do is have some really big tree buffers along the freeway. We know that traffic is one of the worst health risks that we all face, and one of the best ways to deal with that is to put in trees. And it makes the drive more pleasant. It protects our health. I mean, these are the kinds of things that go to design standards that aren't project-specific, but are for the entire community. I'd like to, okay, thank you very much. I hope that you will consider leaving this chapter, and I do think it addresses important points. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the sign-ups for this public hearing. Does anybody else like to speak to Chapter 10, Design, of the Comprehensive Plan? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you all for testifying for our series of Comprehensive Plan public hearings. The next one is Resolution relating to the Waukesha County Coordinated Water System Plan Update. We have no one signed up, but we'll have a staff report first.
Thank you. Gary Stoica, Waukesha County Public Works. I just have a brief staff report. You may recall that I presented the Coordinated Water System Plan to you at the May 24th Surface Water Work Session, so I won't go into all the details. Just for, to remind you, and to, for anybody in the room who wants to know what a Coordinated Water System Plan, is it's a plan for public water systems within a defined area that identifies the present and future needs of the systems, and sets forth a means of meeting those needs in the most efficient manner possible. It is done under the Public Water System Coordination Act of 1977, which is RCW 70.116. It is applicable within a critical water supply service area, which the council, past councils have designated pretty much all of Waukesha County as the Critical Water Supply Service Area, west of the National Forest, excluding portions of the Lummy Nation Reservation. It consists of two parts. The plan itself, which is what was in your packet today, but it also includes by reference all of the water, all of the individual water system plans of all the water systems in the county. It is part of our comp planning process, and it's the link between land use and water planning. And it's also part of our local water resources planning process in that we're quantifying public water needs. public water needs. The requirements of the plan are that it's not inconsistent with local land use plans, programs, and policies, that it recognizes all adopted water resources and water quality plans, it establishes fire protection standards, identifies future public water system service areas, addresses inter ties, includes satellite management agency requirements, and addresses receivership for failing systems. The entire process is overseen by what's called the Water Utility Coordinating Committee, and they're, and they consist of, the eligible members are all water systems with more than 50 connections, as well as a representative of the Health Department, Planning and Development Services, and a representative of the Waukamara County Council. Decisions are made by majority vote of those present. Also, in addition to those members, the official members, we also invited all water systems in the county to participate, as well as the tribes. They could participate as non-voting members, just to be part of the process. The process started here in Waukamara County in 1990 with the designation of the Critical Water Supply Service Area. The first plan was adopted, was put together in 1993. It was never approved with elimination regarding groundwater, groundwater usage on the reservation. The second and most recent version was adopted in 2000, and that was fully approved. And this current process began in 2014. Other elements of the plan include evaluation of population, water demand, and existing systems and water rights analysis. And there's also a section on a list of issues that water systems may want to track, just a list of issues that a lot of water systems, if they're not following these issues, may want to be aware of. It also includes a section on plan implementation. The approval process. The Coordinated Water System Plan was unanimously approved by the WOOC on April 20, with a caveat that minor corrections and changes can occur without a new vote. It was also presented to the planning unit around that same time, actually a few weeks before that. The next step in the process was we had a SEPA determination. PDS issued a determination of nonsignificance on May 12, and then we went to a consistency review, which is included in your packet. It is not, in the conclusion of that, what is not inconsistent with local land use plans, programs, and policies. And of course, tonight, we have the public hearing, and then after that, as the council chooses, will be a vote on acceptance. And then after that, it will be submitted to the Washington State Department of Health for actual approval. The consistency review conclusions, as I said, it's consistent with land use plans, the shoreline master program, and development policies. It did note that some cities have service that extend beyond their city limits, but all of these areas were served before GMA enactment and are not accepting new service connections in those areas. And in one case, service was extended to one home because of a health emergency. Also, all UGAs have water service. Another conclusion was it was adequate, the plan is adequate to, we have adequate water supplies to meet countywide growth projections for the next 20 years. The CWSP contains a utility service review procedure to ensure that there is potable water, water available to serve development. The county reviews the water system plans to ensure consistency with zoning and water purveyors are given opportunity, and water purveyors are given the opportunity to comment on the zoning changes. So that's kind of how we coordinate that. And also, fire flow requirements are coordinated with the zoning. The fire marshal approved the fire protection standards. Let's see. CWSP has been coordinated with other water planning efforts as well. The following issues are addressed in the CWSP, including future service areas identified, existing inter ties are identified, and satellite management agencies' requirements are included. The recommendation from PDS is that the CWSP is not inconsistent with land use plans, shoreline master program, or development policy, and they recommend that the council vote to accept the plan. I just want to touch on one note that you guys have all heard about. Shortly following the WOOC vote, we received some comments from the Lummi Nation on the plan. All comments were related to Section 8 of the plan, with just a list of issues for water systems to be aware of. They're not inoperative. They don't include procedures or anything. And all of the, all of the, all of the comments that we, that we responded to were dealing with primarily things like dates, names of the water system, and relatively minor things. The comments were deemed minor in nature. However, we did send it to the entire Water Utility Coordinating Committee on May 18, and asked if anyone had a problem with that, or if they wanted to review them and had, have a new meeting or a new vote. And we didn't hear anyone, anything from any of the WOOC members. No requests were received. Just recently, last week, we received one comment from a WOOC member who objected to the language regarding tribal sovereignty. And after consultation with our legal department, we proposed some new language in there that just referred to the tribes as federally recognized tribes, because this section of the report is really not about that issue, it's just listing things. So we just wanted to say that tribes are, there's two federally recognized tribes in the county, and they have issues such as potential requests for, for quantification of their water rights. So again, it's not to take a position on it, it's just to state that water systems may want to be aware that that's an issue that may affect them. After that language was proposed, the WOOC members were again solicited to determine if there was another vote or meeting necessary, and we have not had any requests from a WOOC member. So the decision tonight for the council following the public hearing will be, the decision before the council is not really to approve the plan, again, that's the DOH responsibility, but the decision before and the resolution that's presented to you will be for the determination to accept the CWSP as being not inconsistent with land use plans, programs, and policies. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Gary. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Mr. Brown?
Mrs. Stoika, sorry. You should know by now you don't run away that crap.
Well, I thought you'd hear comments first, but.
GWI, I couldn't find the definition of that.
GWI, it's in the report. Groundwater or?
Groundwater and the influence of surface water, I believe, is what the definition is. It should be in the report.
So it's sort of like a DUI for a while?
[laughter]
Groundwater.
Under the influence of surface water. So it's, I believe that, I'd have to look, but I believe it's a situation where you have a groundwater well very close to a lake or a shoreline, that essentially you're sucking surface water.
Okay. And their concern was that was for contaminants, bacterial contaminants?
Right. So you're not getting much of the filtering effect of groundwater.
And then TNC and COM under the water system time. What is that?
I would have to grab my plan, but there's a definition section in the beginning.
Yeah.
Really do need to do something about these acronyms.
Transient and transient non.
Yeah. I mean, there's a definition section in the beginning that includes all the definitions and acronyms used in the report.
All right. Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak, but we will open it up for anyone who would like to.
Ellen Baker, Glacier Water District. Sorry, I didn't get her early enough to sign up.
Oh, that's fine.
Can you hear me now?
You said that's fine.
Oh, good. Okay, I was pleased to hear that my question about changes to Section 8 did receive some legal review, because I thought that was significant. It is technically significant. And in fact, I thought it was important for council to be aware that the plan overall did not receive water rights, or review, legal review by a water rights attorney. So when you accept it, there are a lot of generalities, a lot of statements made throughout the CWSP about issues that still need to be addressed. The watershed management plan is only briefly mentioned one time in Chapter 8, which was kind of unfortunate. And it doesn't mention the IFAP at all, which is the Instream Flow Action Plan, which a lot of us would like to see implemented as we move forward, because federal policy on settlement of the water rights claims, the tribal water rights claims, will always loom ahead of us until we deal with it. So I thought it was unfortunate that the watershed management plan was only mentioned once. And beyond that, I just note again that it was sort of unfortunate the changes were made after the WOOC made its vote. I understand the Department of Health is comfortable with that. If Waukamara County is comfortable with Waukamara, or the Department of Health's position on that, apparently they're taking responsibility for that. So I would just make a note of it. And also, for what it's worth, Glacier Water District isn't listed as a participant on the WOOC list. So if you're still making changes after the fact, you might want to make sure that Glacier Water District is listed as a WOOC participant. It's just a footnote. All that said, thank you for making sure that this made it to legal review and that that one update was made, as it should have been. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else who would like to speak?
Wendy Harris, I don't have anything specific to the plan itself, but I was surprised to hear there was correspondence or a letter from Lummi Nation, because it's not in the materials for public review for purposes of this hearing. And I would have been very interested in reviewing that. So I'm asking at a minimum that the council direct the staff to put that on your website or add it in somewhere, maybe when you talk about actions taken, so that I can see what that letter said and other people can. That's obviously a very important issue. And I just also wanted to remind the council that there is a Supreme Court case pending that involves exempt wells. And I know that's not what this covers, but clearly, depending on the decision that comes from the Supreme Court, there might be implications for the water supply that's available generally for some of these other water associations. And I just would like to know if this document is going to address the future water needs, because I, you know, 20 years out isn't very far in terms of what your water needs are, especially when you've got some in-stream flow issues that still need to be quantified. Another issue I'd like to bring to your attention that I think is very important is, under the Critical Area Ordinance, the CERA provisions, the Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas, include not just water quality issues for underground water, it includes quantity issues for surface water, in-stream flows to the NOOCs Act to protect fish and wildlife. And I'd like to know if that's been considered, because in the CAO to date, the county did not address that and include that. And I think that could have some potentially significant impacts on what we're talking about here. And I just wanted to make sure that, I saw some discussion here about chemicals, dangerous chemicals that were in water, and I think that's really good. There was a 1987 study from the Sumas Aquifer that I didn't see referenced, and I'm not sure if there was enough in here about the nitrate contamination, because it's a very significant problem. 30% of the wells, well, this doesn't deal with the groundwater wells, but, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to talk to us about the Coordinated Water System Plan? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and we're working council off the green copy. What are the council's wishes?
What green copy? I didn't see the green. How is it different?
The green copy only refers to one chapter, correct?
Yes, Section 8.
Yes, Mr. Wyman?
Well, as the council's a member of the WOOC, I would like to make a motion that the council determine that the Coordinated Water System Plan Update is not inconsistent with Waukamara County Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations, and forward it on to the Department of Health for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Brenner?
Well, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I would like, in the whereases, since they say the Water Utility Coordinating Committee, consisting of water purveyor and county government representatives finalized the Coordinated Water System Plan Update in April 2016. Well, we didn't, oh, I guess our people on that committee did that. But in between that and a determination of nonsignificance, I would like either a new whereas or additional wording that says, after the unanimous finalization of this resolution, the, however you want to say it, the federally, federal jurisdictions of the Lummi Nation and the NOOCs Tribe presented comments that were, that were approved by staff that are within the, and then the next one, a determination of nonsignificance would go right along with that. I think it's only fair, since they unanimously voted for it, to make that comment about, that there were comments received after they unanimously approved it, and I think it would fit right in there.
Do you want to propose specific language and amend this?
Yeah, I can make it real short. Following the, do you want to have a separate whereas, or do you want to have it follow as a sentence?
You're just, you're proposing an amendment, so we'll have to vote on it.
Okay. Whereas, following the Water Utility Coordinating Committee's unanimous vote, some new language was presented and approved by staff. Yeah, that'd be fine. Which is contained in the resolution. There'd be, it'd be nice to have somewhere in that, if it's going to be online, to say where people can, as Wendy was saying, where people could see that, the comments from the tribes, that would be great. That doesn't have to be in this whereas, though.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it, so we can discuss it. I, and since I seconded, can I just continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding was there wasn't much response to the comments, they were fairly minor. Does that require an extra whereas? I'm not convinced of that.
I could just put it as a sentence following, because sentence is there.
I'm fine with that. It's just I want to make sure that it's stated. And I don't see that it would hurt anything to put it in there, especially if the next one says, whereas a determination of nonsignificance was issued. Seems like that's a good compromise. And by the way, I did call, you had a letter in our original stuff that was from the chair, and I called the chair, and I asked the chair specifically, what would you think of having it go back to the WOOC, which I'm not even proposing right now? And he said, "That would be fine." So I think it's more about, you know, you send something out, and it's kind of like, "Oh, yeah, whatever." But if you talk to someone specifically, you get a little more specific information. And I, it wasn't me going looking for somebody, his letter was in there. And it didn't quite tell me, I mean, it even was so, it was so positive about, they worked through some real contentious issues and came to a unanimous vote. They were pretty, sounds like they were pretty proud of that. So I do think we need to make just the statement that there was more information received and, which was put into the final recommendation.
I just want to state that we did, based on the WOOC's vote, we did receive those late comments, and we did send those out to the WOOC on two occasions, and no WOOC members asked for, we said, "Do you want a new vote or a new meeting to discuss?", and we got zero responses both times.
So I'm just telling you what I did. I called the guy who wrote the letter.
I think if you write, "Staff made changes," it makes it sound like we did it in a vacuum. And we did, we did both say, two times we sent out, asked the WOOC, would they want to hear this again? So I just want to state.
How could you, what's your suggestion of putting language in there that just states that fact, without making it sound like we're picking on staff or anybody?
I, personally, I don't think it really, it's really relevant. I mean.
I think it is.
The WOOC.
And you haven't thought, you know, you've kept, every time I've brought stuff up, you've given me reasons not to do it. So I don't think, we're not coming from the same place.
Right. Well, I'm relying on the WOOC to lead us. The WOOC is the, is the citizen agency that's guiding this, and not a single member has disputed that.
I, so.
Well.
Well, I don't think it's a question of disputing it. I think it's a question of process. And it was staff that determined this was all insignificant.
No, it was not, that is not true.
Who was it?
We said that we viewed it in light of the staff, in light of the WOOC's vote, that we could make minor changes. We sent it out, and it says, this seems to fit into the minor changes. And the response we got, we got several people, WOOC members, who said, yes, these are minor changes. We do not need a vote. From the others, we did not get any response. Staff did not make that final determination. We deferred to the citizens committee.
You did make the determination that it was insignificant.
We made the determination to ask the WOOC.
Yeah, but you said, you gave them your opinion and then did it.
Right.
And, what?
Right.
Okay.
Right. But I'm saying, we did not make that final.
You made a determination, then.
We made an assessment and left it up to the WOOC to make the decision.
Okay, you made an assessment that it was insignificant. I'm just telling you, you got that one guy, you know, prominent in this thing as the chair, and I called him and asked. And he said it would be fine to send it back to WOOC.
If the WOOC so chose.
Yeah. But, you know, when you don't go after something personally, and it's kind of after the fact, and people are busy, I'm not necessarily expecting people to jump up and, not too many of them, to jump up and down and say much. But when I took the time to contact him, that's what he said. So I just feel like one statement in here.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
God, I'm compromising here. I thought one statement, so I can support it, would just be to, you know, state that after the unanimous vote of the WOOC, there were, I won't even say staff, there were some comments presented and approved, and they're in the final proposal. I don't think it's a big deal.
Mr. Mann?
Gary, can you come back up? That was good advice. But now, now we're on a little different topic. In section 8.1, where the, in our updated version,
Yes.
our dark green packet, I'm just, I'm not clear on which changes were made when and who requested them. So it shows here sovereign has a red line through it and the word federally recognized Indian tribes. Which was the original language? Which was the Lummi comment? And which was the final?
The original, the original term was sovereign tribes. The Lummi requested that it be changed to sovereign governments. And Ellen Baker, who just spoke a minute ago, said that she thought that that was problematic. And so I consulted with legal, and we just decided to go with the term federally recognized tribes. Because it's really not, the whole section is just informational, so we didn't want to get into.
You don't have to justify it. I'm just trying to get the facts. So you had as sovereign, Indian tribes, they requested sovereign government,
Correct.
and you put it as federally recognized Indian tribes.
That's correct, in response to Ms. Baker.
And did we, or did staff or anybody give that feedback to the tribes, let them know what our determination on that issue going forward was?
No.
Okay. Do we have any idea what their thoughts are on this essentially denying their request?
No, I actually don't. No.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Wymer?
I think, Gary, before you sit down, the Lummi's asked for a number of other little changes, too, all of which we made.
Not all. I don't have all of them. There were a couple of other suggestions that we just didn't think were.
But a bunch of the dates and stuff.
Yeah, the dates.
Corrected and.
Corrected dates, yeah.
Right. Okay. So I just want to make this point, and that was the one.
Right, right.
You know, I'm going to speak against the amendment, just because I don't think it's significant enough to put a whole nother line in the resolution. You know, the WOOC did some pretty amazing work over the year, formed lots of subcommittees, did lots of hard work. I wish I could say I paid that much attention, but that would be a line. But I know how hard they worked and paid very close attention to lots of specifics in this. And if we've asked them twice whether they have concerns about this, I think you can take that to the bank that no one had concerns, because they had concerns about a lot of things in this document and worked through those. So I think trying to stick another whereas in here about something that the WOOC didn't have concerns, and even after Ms. Baker brought this to our attention, we had some legal review and tweaked the words a little bit, I'm fine with it as it is and would just like to move the resolution forward.
Mr. Brown?
I can't resist the temptation to have Gary do some more exercise.
Terrible final.
He's going to ask.
I noticed you walked away very quietly, but we can still see you. So my question was simply, were the tribes actually involved in the process?
No, no. And they're, they're not one of the water systems. They're, the tribally-owned water systems are not included in the water system plan. We invited them, just like we did the other water systems, participate as non-voting members, and they declined.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
Well, to make light of one sentence, I think is a bit disrespectful of the process. But the whole thing is, what happened, they were invited into the process, they chose not to participate, where they could have given comments before there was the final vote. After the final vote, they met with staff and presented what they wanted changed. And I don't really have a problem with the changes or the, you know, but I do have a problem with not stating that, since we state about the WOOC. And there's no statement about what's, and, you know, you can call them minor all you want, and to some degree, maybe they are. But when I think of minor, I think of grammatical stuff. I don't think of actual factual changes of words and stuff. So I think it is very important. And I'm open to suggestions on keeping it as short as possible. But I think there should be a statement that after they did that, there's a little piece missing, that some other clarifications, whatever you want to call them, were added. And I don't consider them necessarily minor. I'm not real sure. I'm sure you can find an attorney to tell you one thing and then an attorney to tell you another. I just think it's a statement of fact, and it should be in there.
Any other discussion? Could you read back the motion so we have the exact language, please?
Whereas, following the Water Utility Coordinating Committee unanimous vote, some new language was presented and approved.
Okay. That's the amendment that's before us. All those in favor, then amend this, signify with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. That fails one to six. So now we're back to the original motion to, that Mr. Wymer made. Any further discussion? Mr. Mann?
You know, lately, I've become sensitive to the fact that, you know, the Lummi's and the NOOCs take very seriously their status and their identity as, with respect to the federal government. And what we might think is just a wordsmithing issue actually sometimes has significant meaning with them. And I'm having, just, I'm a little bit apprehensive about voting on this right now, not knowing how significant the request was on the part of the Lummi and what their reaction is to our, to our change in the language, you know, essentially describing and identifying them. And I realize it's a complex topic, and it's fraught with, there's a lot that goes with it. So I'm, I'm a little bit nervous about getting a specific request from them, changing it in a way beyond that, that they didn't even ask for, that, and then not checking, not giving them any feedback or discussing it with them.
Would you like to take any action with that thought?
No, I might just not vote for it. But I'm hoping we can talk. I'd be interested in what anyone else has.
I agree with you. If you were going to make a motion, I was going to second it, so.
Okay. Well, I didn't know anyone would agree with me.
Mr. Donovan?
I appreciate Councilmember Mann's concerns. And I'm wondering what we are looking at in terms of a timeframe on this, to get that kind of feedback. And I do appreciate that the amended wording says that the tribes have powers of self-governance. But if the word sovereign means something in terms of identity more important than that, it'd be interesting. Do we have time to get feedback, I guess is what I'm.
Well, the original language approved by, a couple of things. Original language approved by the WOOC was sovereign tribes. That's what the WOOC approved. Lummi requested sovereign governments. And after consulting with legal counsel, we determined federally recognized Indian tribe was, was the appropriate term based on legal counsel. Again, the, the section isn't operative, so
Right.
you could even take out that entire reference, so.
But you didn't add sovereign government, but you put in powers of self-government.
Yes, that's the legal, to make this.
But in terms of this discussion, is this, do we have time to split?
Well, and again, I guess the question before the resolution and the question is whether this is, this plan is not inconsistent with our land use plans, policies, and procedures. And the actual approval of the plan rests with the Department of Health. So the resolution before you is just, is it not inconsistent with county plan, use plans, policies, and procedures? That's the county's role in this. And then the actual approval is done by the Department of Health.
Ms. Brenner?
Also, I would hope, I'd like to see this tabled. And if it could be tabled to send back to WOOC, which is not what I'm asking, it could be tabled to find out the answers to the questions. And I also would like a copy of the email, or whatever it was, that you sent to all the WOOC members, any and all, after the fact that you've sent.
That's a motion?
Oh, sure. That's a motion.
Do we have a second?
Why are you looking at me?
Because you're the one who brought it up.
I still have more questions. I'm not ready to make any motions yet. I don't, I don't know what I want to do.
Well, he asked me, and I said, sure. So now I unmake it.
Okay, so there's no motion on the floor, Mr. Sado?
Yeah. I wanted to know, like, since we are talking about sovereign government or sovereign tribe or federally recognized tribe, these are three different terms. But Lummi is mentioned not only once. It is mentioned on many, many documents, or many, many agreements, or many, many other things. We do, not over last one year, but over last many years. So what is our accepted definition when we do any work with Lummi government? Like, this is not something which has come up new, or maybe they have asked for something new. I'm just wanting to know how we have handled it in other matters as reference to their name.
I really couldn't tell you that. I just deferred to legal counsel when the question came up. So I couldn't tell you how we do it in others. I'd have to look that up.
Mr. Brown?
Okay.
Oh, do you have more?
No.
No.
No, Brown.
So for those of you who are interested in how this can get complex, there's a place in Western Australia called the Principality of Hut River. And I bring this up because this is someone who got into the issue of sovereignty and created an incredible legal quagmire. So my, the point of my bringing this up is this is not a trivial issue. And I think I would like, actually like to go back to Lummi and reach an agreement as to the correct language we use in referring to them in all matters. And so that we can have a consistent way that we agree with this on all issues going forward.
And I don't know if I missed it, but Mr. Donovan, did you get your question answered about timing?
No, but I did hear we could just delete those lines and get to the goal of, or trying here, but I'm not sure. We don't want to be insulting the tribes in terms of how they want to be identified. But no, I didn't, you know, in terms of where we are time-wise. So one option is like, okay, we just don't say it, which I don't think that really solves our long-term concern.
Well, we, the last plan was adopted in 2000, so it's been 16 years. So and we started this, and we started this process in mid-2014. So we've been at this about two years for the update. So there's no deadline on when you need to adopt anything. But it is something that we've been trying to accomplish for a couple of years now. And actually, we've been trying, the county, before I got here, has been trying to get the CWSP updated since about 2010. So.
So what's our current situation here with the motion?
We are only sitting with the motion to approve. That's all we're sitting at right now.
I have another question.
Yes.
Gary, is this the letter you sent them from May 16?
Sent to.
Oh, it says it's to us, but I'm wondering if this was the, if this was the same information?
To, to the.
The WOOC members?
No, I, we did that with, via email.
Okay. Yeah, I would like a copy.
Yeah. And I think I've CC'd you on that, but I can, I can send you all of them again.
Okay.
Mr. Sado?
Well, my suggestion is that we should seek this clarification and then approve it. There's no deadline or urgency that we have to do it tonight. And we should seek that clarification and be on more comfortable ground before we.
Did you put that in the form of a motion?
Well, I, my motion is that we should delay it for two weeks and seek the clarification from the Lummi Nation, as what they like to be addressed as, or the reason for that. And then, once we get that answer, then we just debate that.
Right. I just wanted to indicate, I'm not the legal counsel that gave the advice on this. But, but I would appreciate it if, I don't think this is something that just needs to be discussed with the Lummi Nation. I think there were probably reasons that the legal counsel who gave the advice, gave the advice he did. I assume it was Dan Gibson.
Dan Gibson, I'm sure.
And so I'd like to make sure we keep him in the loop.
Sure.
Okay. Do we have a second to Mr. Sado's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
But I gotta, we were told by Ellen that her water association is not listed in this.
No, I did find it. She's, it is listed in another.
We just verified that.
I had to mark the page, actually.
I just want to hear what.
Sorry.
Sorry, we just looked in the list of WOOC members, and for some reason, they're not. So we can, we can add that.
And is there any possibility there's any other members who might not be listed in it?
Well, consultant will check, double-check that list.
Mr. Brown, you were next.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a friendly amendment to Mr. Sado's thing, that we seek consensus between the county and the tribes, as to Ms. Frakes's point. We seek consensus as to the correct way to address them.
I accept that amendment.
Mr. Mann?
Yeah, that, that would be ideal. As long as we're going to delay this, we could address some of Ms. Brenner's concerns. Maybe reconvening the WOOC for one extra meeting is a pain, but I don't know how big a deal it is. But if, you know, we've got this potential change, a couple others, you know, we may just want to send it back to them to have another meeting, vote on it as a group again, and then bring it back to us. And that would give them time to have that dialogue with legal and with the Lummi to come to an agreement on how they want to be recognized and identified.
But you'd have to have the agreement with the Lummi's before you have the amendment.
I know, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I think a point has been missed, that we have conferred with the Lummi's already, and we have their view of what they would like to see in this document. And for reasons we're not clear at this point, our council has suggested an alternative. I'm not sure that it's necessary to go back to the Lummi's unless there's some negotiation that needs to happen over, over this terminology. The option is just to seek some clarification of why Mr. Gibson made the recommendation he did, and then move from there.
I'm not suggesting, or I don't, I don't know if anyone is suggesting, I'm not suggesting that we go and have a negotiation with them. I think it would have been, I think, given the sensitivity of the issue and the nuance of the issue, when we got their request, doesn't sound like we conferred with them, it sounds like we got their request. it sounds like we got their request, sort of saw it and made, made the change that we wanted to without, I think, what would have been a, a courtesy and a respect that, that is important to say to them, "We got your, we, we got, we got your memo, got your comment, you know, we've, we've, we've talked about it, here's what we're proposing," or "Here's, here's what we've decided to identify you as." That would have been sufficient, I think. Because I don't, I don't know that it's a huge issue one way or the other. My, my sensitivity is more around just going ahead and doing what we think we want to do without engaging them again. That, I think, is, is the problem I have. Not, not the actual language that you chose, not the legality of it one way or the other, just, just how that, it wasn't a, you used the word confer, it doesn't sound like it was a confer, it sounded like it was, "Got your, got your comment, we're kind of, kind of ignore it and we'll just hope that's okay." And that's, in this particular subject, you know, normally, you know, I'm not all that... Well, I won't say anything, but I think this is an important nuanced topic and we should, we should handle it carefully.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, that's why I didn't, didn't know if it was insignificant or not, but in the meantime, since we're gonna hopefully postpone this, I would also like to, after we get that, the, the letter, I would like to know if the WOOC is either, give them, give them some choices. Do you want to have a meeting? Do you want to have a little sentence put in there? Or do you want to do nothing? At least give them...
That'd be good, yeah.
Yeah. And I'd like to see the letter before it goes to them.
Okay, so the motion before us is to table until such time we get consensus between the county and the tribe, correct? More discussion, Mr. Brown?
I just want to add one point. My desire to do this is not specifically to the lummy, but it's to any other government or entity that we deal with on a professional basis. If there's any ambiguity as to the correct form of address, I think we should take the time as a matter of courtesy to establish what the correct form of address is. And if we have a disagreement about it, then let's resolve the disagreement, define it going forward. The other thing I will say is, one of the challenges I've found sometimes with some of the communication from the lummy is, I'm not necessarily sure it's coming from the lummy council. Sometimes it's just coming from a department head or a member of staff. And I like to get this sort of stuff direct from the council so we know clearly what they want.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I'm happy to put this off if we can clarify these things, but I would like to hear Mr. Gibson's rationale, why it's changed.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
I think I can withdraw my motion if we just say that we want to table it rather than saying, "Let's reach consensus, let's do negotiation" or anything. I think we should simply table it for two weeks. I think the staff knows what we are trying to do and not say anything else. And once we know, is it even significant or is it even, it was just like somebody wrote it or came from the council or not, like lummy council, we would know. And at this point, assuming that, oh, we have to negotiate or reach consensus or anything, I'm just rethinking, let's not say anything. Let's just say that we want some clarification, let's table it for two weeks. And once the clarification is there, we'll just reconsider what we need to do next.
I think that's an improvement. I second that.
So we're back, back to his original motion?
Back to Barbara's resolution. Yes, I support that now.
Okay.
Sorry, what is the original motion?
To table.
Just table it, we'll talk to them.
We'll talk to them. Staff knows what, what we, and WOOC will also be into that discussion as well as lummy, all these things clarified, takes two weeks, we'll come back in two weeks.
Okay.
But...
Mr. Brown?
Well, let's deal with this issue and then I'll, I'll add to it. You have, you have a motion on the floor, so...
To table.
So, so I'll let you deal with that and then I want to bring up something related.
Okay. So, all those in favor, oh, Mr. Wymer?
Another question, does that mean we're leaving, we have to have another hearing? Are we leaving the hearing open?
Well, if it's not significant, we probably don't need another hearing. So that would sort of depend on if it's significant.
That's true.
Yeah, that's correct.
If, if you make a significant change, we would need to have another hearing.
So I guess...
Depending on the discussion, we'll find out.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly, so...
I don't think any of the changes you've discussed are significant.
Yep.
All right. Everybody ready? All those in favor, to table, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post. That passes unanimously. So, we have one more public hearing.
Mr. Chair, if I may, on the same topic, I'd like to make another motion. I still like the idea of us having a council-to-council communication with the lummy and get consensus on the correct form of address that we use government-to-government from here on in. So we don't have this discussion again.
Okay, so what, what are, what are your ideas, a letter or...
A letter of final, I mean, I'm next. Who's the, who's the, who's the Indian, who's the tribal affairs referee?
What?
Barbara's on it.
I'm on the, yeah.
Tribal relations.
That's right.
I think I am too.
So it's you and me?
Yeah. Well, I can make, I can reach out to Timbaloo.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have...
We don't need a motion, that's part of your committee.
Yeah, I have a suggestion on that. I have a suggestion on that is, is that maybe we should leave it to the legal to legal, our legal can talk to their legal, what did, really, we cannot change something which is legally how they are defined. And they cannot change something legally they have defined. We can come to an agreement between council and council that in our best judgment, we should call you this, or they should say, "You call us this," right? But I think this is a matter which is of legal significance. Let Mr. Gibson or somebody call the attorney, council attorney of the lummy tribal council and find out, is there anything behind it or what the reason is? And if there is established, because we have hundreds of tribes in our nation, and there must be established precedent how to address them. And let's follow that because council-to-council is still our opinion, not legal.
So if the council of the lummy, I would call Timbaloo and suggest that we have legal council-to-legal council discussion.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Unless, maybe the, well, if we're gonna do that, then it's not us. I think it should be the chair.
I just want to initiate a conversation.
Timbaloo is the chair. I think our chair should just contact him and...
I have a great relationship, so I have no problem with it.
Yeah, ask, I don't think, our committee's a little different.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it sounds more respectful if it's a chair-to-chair.
Yeah, but I think we should stick with the legal definition rather than creating a new one.
I'll frame the question in that manner.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on the consolidated water system plan?
Haven't we done enough for the evening?
No wonder we've been working on it for two years.
Yeah.
Okay, so our fourth public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the Public Works Director and the County Engineer to close a restricted use of county roads on a temporary basis.
I move approval.
Do we have a staff who can't do that yet?
Sure. I mean, are you, we're giving them the...
Do we have any staff report? No staff report. So, I will open the public hearing. Do, we have no one signed up. Does anyone like to speak to this? Going once, going twice? Sold, okay.
I'm approving.
I will close the public hearing and Ms. Brenner has a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
I just have one question. Is it temporary means for this construction season or is it for one year? I, I haven't even gone through the detail.
I guess it's forever.
I mean, normally it is during the construction season and so they don't have to come back every time.
I like that.
Temporary usually means for a couple of days and is associated with a particular request by a third party to do work in our right-of-way. So under the existing ordinance, it's, we're required for, after more than 12, a 12-hour closure to come back to council, request you by ordinance to establish that road closure. And obviously, that has some, some pretty serious limitations in terms of practical application and being responsive to, to these third parties. So this would allow Public Works some more leeway in, in how we administer those road closures.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, also, this is one of those perfect examples where you have, you can have more efficiency.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, no, we agree.
So I couldn't help myself.
This is, this is one of my new guy questions, I've been almost six months. So if, if there's a freeze condition and you have to close a road, what does the RCW say about...
Yeah, so historically, the ordinance, so the RCW provides the county council the authority to close county roads, obviously. And then the county has delegated to the Public Works Director and the County Engineer the authority to close roads for those freeze thaw conditions or place load limits, those sorts of things, in the event that the, that the load will damage the road structurally. And so that has been in the county's ordinance for a long time.
Does it be a similar delegation?
Yeah, and that's the existing ordinance and we're asking to expand it slightly so that we can, we can apply the same discretion to construction projects.
Any other questions? Discussion on the motion? See, none, all's in favor, say aye. Or, excuse me, this is an ordinance. Please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Brad Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes. That passes unanimously.
We, we created efficiency.
We're not abdicating legislation.
We're not abdicating legislation, yeah.
Okay, so our next item is open session. So during the open session, anyone in the, anyone out in the public will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Please state your name and topic and the, if you have a complicated name, please spell it for us and you'll be given a 30-second warning and she'll call when the time is up.
Good evening, Steve Harris, I live in Bellingham, Washington. I'm here to talk to you guys tonight. It's, it's always fascinating to hear council business. It's a, the little things that really mean a lot to some people is amazing to me. But what I'm here to talk about tonight is the EMS proposal that's gonna be on the ballot in November. And I had an opportunity to listen to most of the comments that occurred today in your guys' budget discussion. And it sounds like you guys are on the right track about what the other side of the levy imposes. For the record, I absolutely support the levy. I think it's a brilliant idea. In effect, it creates a levy shift from the general fund to a property tax that, with all due respect, takes it out of your control every budget cycle. It's in there for at least six years, I believe, is the levy, the levy length. But it also creates a circumstance where it doesn't require what you're gonna do with the money that's going to be supplanted once the shift occurs. In a regular levy shift, whether it's from the road fund to the general fund, it's, it just goes straight across. In this case, you're, you have an extra $1.4 million and after this upcoming budget, it's maybe $2.3 million, $2.4 million. And I know there's a lot of good things and useful things that you can do with the money. And I know council members who do have mentioned the upcoming jail issues. There's also issues where it could be used for constructing a, the mental health triage facility that would take away some of the burden of the jail. I know that, I believe there is mentions that there's actually separate funding of groups who would actually run the facility once the capital construction costs were purchased. So supplanting has always been a big issue. I know our legislature recognizes it in a lot of grant funds, they'll actually include language that forbids any supplanting of, of current dollars. And I've mentioned, I think that's part of the problem as to how we got into the current jail funding issue in the first place, is once we passed the 2004 sales tax, we found ourselves with more money in the general fund to use for other purposes, which is inappropriate use. My concern about the EMS is because I really do truly support it and love the concept, is that that money hanging out there creates this situation with the public where we're asking you, "Look, we need more money for EMS. It's a great thing, we need to raise your taxes to do it. But the taxes we already have for it, just don't worry about those, we're gonna find another useful purpose for them." So, you know, yes, you're representative officials and we're here to trust that you make the decisions best, but I think in this case, it would help a long way to get approval of this...
30 seconds, please.
...to actually pass an ordinance or a resolution or whatever the council prefers to do to specify where this money's gonna go in the event that it actually does pass, and I hope that it does. Whether it's set aside for whatever purpose, for however many years, it gives a grant to the public, it creates a, a public meeting where it's discussed in public, the public is completely aware of what the intent of the council is to do with this money. So anyway, that's my comments, I hope you'll take it into consideration. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
My name is Edward Ury, spelled U-R-Y, of Bellingham, and I am the Clean Energy Organizer at Resources for Sustainable Communities. And my comment actually pertains to the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 7. Sorry I was late for the public hearing. As you know, the Clean Energy Program has been advocating for improvements to the Comprehensive Plan focused on objectives to invest in energy security and renewable energy jobs and also to prevent future fossil fuel export projects at Cherry Point. Both of these subjects could be addressed through language in the economics chapter and other chapters, and both are objectives that will clearly serve Goal 7 of the Growth Management Act. I'd first like to also thank the council for already adopting so many strong policies to promote clean energy. And many in the community are glad to see that the council is finally moving forward with language to revisit the restrictions on the development of wind energy systems. And I'd like to thank council members Barbara Brenner and Ken Mann for proposing language to address this and for responding to the, the nice letters submitted by the Western Washington University students for renewable energy. And I heard that Item 27 was not reached on the agenda today in the special committee of the whole, and I look forward to hearing your discussion on it. And I'd just like to state a preference for the language proposed by Mr. Mann. The alternate language to determine whether there are new technologies that adequately protect public health and safety is, I think, unnecessary, though well-intentioned, given that we already know that current wind energy technologies adequately protect public health and safety and there's really not a shred of evidence to the contrary. And I'll refer you to the thoroughly researched paper on the subject that was submitted by the students to your benefit. In contrast, however, there are indeed grave threats to public health and safety in Waukeun County that have so far gone unaddressed. We should need no convincing that oil by rail transport is wildly unsafe and bears enormous risks, as we saw with yet another unit train explosion last week in Mojeur, Oregon, which obliterated the town's water supply in the effort to douse the inextinguishable oil fire. And we also know that plans to export crude oil through Waukeun County, through Cherry Point, will further increase oil by rail shipments as well as marine vessel traffic, further endangering sensitive ecosystems and reliant industries like fishing and farming. While even operations without incident would pose severe threats to the retention of many local businesses, they would threaten the job security of refinery workers and diminish the unique qualities of life which attract healthy business growth in Waukeun. So you have the chance now to enact language that would protect us from the threat of crude oil exports. And with confirmation from multiple legal consultations, we can be assured that enacting this policy is entirely legal and responsible. And we can, I can understand your hesitation to act, given the opposing pressures, but time is running out.
Time.
And so, thank you, hope to see things move forward soon.
Thank you.
My name is Adam Schaefer, that's spelled S-C-H-A-E-F-E-R. I live in Bellingham. Good evening, council members. As always, it's a pleasure to have the privilege to address the council tonight. I'm here to comment on proposed changes to Chapter 4 of the County Comprehensive Plan, the chapter dealing with capital facilities. Specifically, I want to address the proposal to eliminate Policy 4G TAC 3 and its proposed replacement, Policy 4D TAC 2. Policy 4G TAC 3 outlines the adequate level of service or LOS for corrections facilities with a numerical standard stating that there needs to be 1.42 jail beds per 1,000 county population, while Policy 42 simply states the need for a new jail and sheriff's office. The reason for change gives an explanation for why Policy 4G TAC 3 is inadequate, as well as what it is being replaced by. And it was deemed inadequate because, and let me quote, "The existing jail LOS does not reflect the actual need for jail beds. The county has undertaken an extensive jail planning process, including a jail planning task force, needs assessment, and environmental impact statement. The existing jail LOS is based solely on population growth, however, the need for jail beds is also influenced by a number of other factors, including state and local laws and criminal justice practices. Jail planning is not based upon the strict application of a numerical standard contained in the existing LOS." in the existing LOS." And I, and I agree with this. I agree that the, the jail planning should be nuanced, and I think that having a set of factors that influence jail population in addition to a numerical standard may lead to a better policy for the Comprehensive Plan. However, the reason for change references the jail needs assessment, which was conducted in 2013. And in that needs assessment, it says, "Since 2000, the jail bed need has grown at roughly the same rate as the county population." So the documents being referenced to support the claim that it's not adequate seems to actually support the idea that a numerical standard based off county population is adequate for determining the needed level of service. The reason for change finishes by stating the reason why the replacement policy is adequate. The numerical standard would be replaced with new Policy 4D TAC 2, which supports construction of a new jail to safely provide the needed corrections facilities over the 20-year planning period. And indeed, Policy 4D TAC 2 is that basic. The proposed policy is just one sentence reading, "Develop new adult correction facilities and sheriff's headquarters facilities on a single campus to provide a safe environment for the community, staff, and inmates." This isn't a level of service requirement that would work for the next 20 years, but rather claim that there should be a new vaguely defined jail. In fact, building a new jail would likely just increase the average daily population, giving the illusion that we need another increase in our defined level of service. The Wackam County 20-year capital facilities plan, that's Appendix E to the Comprehensive Plan, revised in 2014, states that a review of the jail population has shown, shown a significant increase in the offender population, growing from an average daily population of 261 in 2006 to an average daily population in 2008 of 428. This is due primarily to the added capacity resulting from the opening of the new minimum security work center. So while new corrections facilities may be built because our current capacity doesn't fit our current need, our current facilities have a capacity of 433 beds, while our average daily population is only 375. I can email this comment later, because it might be longer than three minutes. But also, also in that appendix, it includes specifics of a new jail, like there would be in La Bounty Road, how big it would be, and certain details of it that I don't think is something that's totally agreed upon by our community. And there should be, it shouldn't be buried in some appendix of the Comprehensive Plan to outline exactly what the new jail should be. As we saw in the last election, our community does not agree on what our new jail should be. And I think the purpose of the, the purpose listed for this chapter of the Comprehensive Plan is to provide a unifying framework for facilities planned to establish levels of service for capital facilities. And this change takes away that framework and that level of service need. So I don't think that's a good change, and there should be something, new proposed language that would better fit as a guide for a county's capital facility needs in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes. Yeah. Are there any questions or anything? No? All right.
Mike Senate from Bellingham, Washington. I'd like to thank the council for its work on this Comprehensive Plan. And these remarks are directed to Policy 5H-5. I'd like the council to change its policy on wind energy and lift the ban on turbines. Electricity from wind does not have to be generated from giant windmills with huge footprints on the landscape. There are much smaller units that use rotating vanes rather than huge propellers. There are rooftop wind turbines being developed. As with solar energy, wind generation can be done on a small scale with significant cumulative additions to the grid. As with solar, wind can make the county less dependent on fossil fuel-generated electricity. Advances in efficiency and cost will be made with decentralized wind power, decreasing energy costs for county residents and increasing the county's economic competitiveness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can you just leave your contact number, Mike? Can you leave your contact information?
Anyone else like to speak during open session?
Wendy Harris. Since the issue is wind energy, I'd just like to say I do support wind energy. But I reviewed the document that was issued by the, the WWU students doing research, and it was really an excellent paper. And it looked at health impacts on people and the environment. However, it, it missed a very important issue. It addressed direct hits to birds and bats by their turbines. But what new science is indicating is that the, the greatest environmental degradation is from loss of habitat and the fragmentation that occurs when you put these turbines on places where it's an intact, large parcel, and then, you know, roads and things go in, and that causes fragmentation. So I, I intend to supplement that. And again, they did excellent research. But it's very important to me that those impacts also be considered for any kind of energy project. I really wanted to talk about my breathing problems and our policies in the comp plan regarding clean air. And I really appreciate the changes that were made. I think overall, you guys are doing a good job. But I got a visit from the chief of the North Wackam Fire Department telling me that because they don't have the resources, and I don't blame them, they will be going out on every fire I complain about to see if it's legal. And if it's legal, that's the end of it, and they won't be contacting me. The problem is not whether it's legal. There is also authority where a fire causes a health problem or a nuisance and interferes with someone's use and enjoyment of property. They have the discretion to put out the fire. They don't want to exercise that discretion. And so what that means is, if I'm being impacted, you know, my health, and they've been to my house, they can see I'm on an oxygen machine, they're not going to put the fire out. And the authority is there. And so I think that what we need is some policy in the comp plan that makes that specific so that
30 seconds, please.
The, the fire department will be comfortable in exercising their authority. In fact, my homeowners association has bylaws and rules that say no open outdoor fires. And I told the fire chief, and he said, well, we don't enforce that. That's, that, because that's at the homeowner association. And it's not just me. There are a lot of people. There are children with asthma. There's a lot of people with respiratory problems. Most of them you don't hear from. So I'm speaking on behalf of a much larger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak during the open session? Seeing none, we'll close the open session, and we'll move to our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, the Wackam County Finance and Administrative Services Committee met today and discussed three items, one through three. These were met with unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was request approval for the city of Bellingham's request for Economic Development Investment Program grant funding in support of the Waterfront Granary/Loral Street project in the amount of 1.1 million. This was held in committee last time. It was reviewed again with additional information today and received approval of 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the city of Bellingham's request for EDI money. Any discussion? Mr. Donovan?
I, I was uncomfortable with this earlier. I appreciate the city for providing us more information and clear, you know, graphics about what the project is. I'm going to abstain, because I don't want my first vote on, on an EDI thing to be for something under the new criteria. Wouldn't necessarily make the scoring thing, but I understand the history behind this and that it, it has been promised. But I'm not going to oppose it, but I, but I don't want to vote for it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And we have one abstention. That passes 6-0, and one abstention by Council Member Donovan.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending Wackam County Code, Chapter 2.06.090 to revise medical examiner advisory council membership designation. This received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Any discussion? Could you please call the roll?
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending Ordinance 2011-049, which was the establishment of the Lummi Nation Ferry Lease Fund to establish a project-based budget and approve the project budget. This received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, so that motion's in front of us. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Just one comment. I had somebody ask me today, are we re-establishing the fund? And I said, no, it's not about the establishment of the fund. It's about establishment only of the project-based budget and approval. Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion? Seeing none, could we call the roll, please?
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending the Wackam County Code 3.08 purchasing system. The committee recommended this be held for the time being, and I so move, I move to the council for consideration and a recommendation to hold.
Okay, so we have a motion to hold this?
I don't think we do. If they did it in committee, it's done, isn't it?
I think, yeah, I figured, but I thought we, didn't we say we were going to bring it?
No.
We don't, we don't have to. There was a, somebody did mention it, but.
I mentioned it, but then you said you wanted to keep it in your committee, and we all.
Yeah.
So if you don't feel there's a vote, this is.
So no action?
Okay, no action. Next item is request authorization with the county executive to enter into the inter, into an interlocal agreement between the Wackam County Flood Control Zone District and the Dyking District Number Two for the Sandy Williams Levy revaluation in the amount of $80,000. And in this case, the council is acting as the Wackam County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, which received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, that motion's in front of us. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Weren't you going to do a little revision or something on it? Like, no, you, Barry. Council, Chair Buchanan?
No, I, no.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to clean up a little something.
That was the next one.
Oh. So we're, okay, we're on the Dyking District one. Sorry. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Is it a roll call, or was it a?
It's a, it's not a.
It's a request. It's not an ordinance.
Next item was a resolution establishing a jail stakeholder work group. And I think we recommended this to the full council for, well, you, you were going to introduce a new version of the full council.
Yeah.
In the red. In the red. You have a red version.
Where's my red? I didn't have the green. I didn't have the red. Christmas is coming, and I don't have any of that stuff.
It just incorporates that language on the, I don't even have mine working here.
Oh, maybe that's where mine is. I think I sat on it. Oh.
So it incorporated the language where we deleted the word address, and we said, therefore be it resolved by the Wackam County Council that a jail work group will be established to provide a recommendation to the council for the financial agreements required for development of a new jail, including the cost of the facility, the funding mechanism, and the allocation of funding of operating expenses between jurisdictions. That was the change we made today.
Move to approve?
Second?
Okay, so that motion is in front of us. Any discussion? Mr. Mann?
I, I hate to be Debbie Downer here, but I think there may be some benefit to putting this on the agenda as in our final version for our next meeting and have a, have a public hearing. I don't think anyone's going to come necessarily, but just to give the public two weeks to review it, because I actually did get questions about this, and people were very confused about what it is, what it, what it meant that we were doing this. And there were some odd conspiracy theories going around. So I, I just throw that out there. If you think it's worthwhile to, to hold this, just to give, you know, formally introduce it and give the public a chance to take a look, or you think it's fine the way it is.
I'm fine to have a public hearing. I, it doesn't, it's whatever the wishes of the council are. Ms. Brenner?
Well, I don't, I think just reintroducing it, I don't think it's a public hearing thing. But I want to remind you, we did have somebody come speak to it tonight, and.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, so. And we're going to get that in writing. Yeah.
Okay, so then I, I move that we hold this for two weeks. Yeah, I move that we hold this for two weeks.
Okay.
Fine.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to hold.
Can you clarify, is that for a public hearing or just holding it for two weeks? No, I think it's for.
Yeah, why not have it as a public hearing? Yeah, for a public hearing.
Okay.
If it's on the agenda, they can come and speak about it anyway. Let's, I think the intent, my intent is to draw attention to it, to make sure we have community support for it as we go along. That way, when we come up with our, upon our recommendations, they can't say we didn't ask for their help.
Covering his bases.
So we, the motion is to hold this for two weeks and place it into a public hearing. Is, Mr. Weimer?
I'm going to speak against the motion, not, not because I have a real concern about it, but just because I think time is ticking on this, and we need to get this group formed and then moving forward. And we put this off for two weeks, and then it takes us another month to rope all the people listed on here. Pretty soon, it's September before the group even meets. And, you know, we're talking less than a year at that point than before. We have to have something fairly planned.
I have a suggestion, then. Put it off for two weeks, introduce it again, and it's, you know, it's on that little camera that's looking at us, so it's going to get the message out. I don't think we need a hearing. I think we need to just get more attention to it. I don't think two weeks is going to make a difference, but I agree that going any longer might. So, yeah.
Mr. Brown?
I share Mr. Weimer's concerns.
As far as timing?
Yeah, I, I don't feel this is substantial enough to delay it. And we can invite people to comment on it retroactively if necessary.
Ms. Donovan?
I, I would like to move forward. I, I think we've had a lot of public conversation about this. But November 17 is going to come up really quick, and it's actually more like August that we're talking about, beginning of August. So.
Any other discussion?
I'm not, that's cool.
Okay, so the motion is to hold and have a public hearing? Any other discussion?
I'm moving, I move to amend to hold and have a discussion in two weeks, not to have a public hearing. That's an amendment.
Do you want to oppose that as a friendly to Mr. Mann?
I'm trying. I don't know if.
I don't accept that.
You don't accept that?
That doesn't solve any of the problems that have been brought up.
It doesn't?
I, I'm sympathetic to the two-week issue, so I, I could see voting either way. I'm not going to be a friend. Sorry.
I withdraw my motion.
So.
This said, you know, assuming that we do want to do this as quick as possible, this is like, does that mean that the chair will be starting to contact all these people immediately, or?
Contact who?
The, finding people to be on the committee, I think, is what we want to do as, as quick as possible.
Oh, that part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they're, how do I put this? Like, so if you weren't going to be doing this anyway for the next two weeks, I guess it doesn't matter. But if you are going to be moving on this, starting tonight, or, or some of us, you know, it, it, it doesn't matter if we wait two weeks, if no one's going to be making calls about putting the committee together. But if that is going to be happening, I'd like to get that going right now. And I'm looking at you, because.
I know, but, well.
Oh, yeah, you're the one who started this.
Yeah, I mean, as far as putting it together, I would start immediately if, if we vote to approve it. If we don't vote to approve it, I will obviously wait until we do.
I think my suggestion is that we should move forward. We have discussed, there will be comments. This is a divisive issue. Some people like it, some people don't like it. We have no way of gauging that we can make a consensus thing. It, it's not going to be consensus, consensus, no matter what we do, what we change, right? So if that is the intent, that if we wait two weeks, and, and we will have everybody agree to that, I don't think that's going to happen. But if we wait two weeks, give public more opportunity to input, they get opportunity to input all the time. And this has been most hotly debated subject. And what we need to do is, is actually put arms around this process rather than opening it up every time. People will comment, people will send letters, people will come and give testimony. That's not going to stop, and we do not intend to stop that. But, like, keep delaying is not really, we'd rather, because this is just a recommendation. This is not. This is not a decision, and in their recommendation, they will make their recommendation, and that will be discussed. We can have a hearing on that. There will be something in our hand to have a hearing about. So my suggestion is that we should just go ahead and approve it today and get on with the program.
Ms. Brenner?
Okay, well, I'm gonna support Ken's motion because I think it's neat what he's trying to do. I'm not gonna support just passing this tonight, so my, my fallback would be to support having it introduced tonight with the changes and discuss it in two weeks.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of holding it for two weeks and having a public hearing signify with aye?
Aye.
All those against?
No.
No. So that fails two to five. Now we're back to the original, uh, the original motion, which is to...
What? Sorry.
Oh.
I was saying it was like the old days.
The old?
About five years ago, when I used to lose every vote. Two to five.
I, I, yeah, two to five, 'cause I was with you on a lot of them.
Okay, so we're back to the resolution itself, the red version. Any further discussion on the motion to approve?
Um, I thought there was a mo, no. I thought there was a motion to introduce it tonight.
We just, it just failed.
Well, that was the hearing part.
That was the whole.
So we are back to the original motion. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify with aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes five to two.
Yeah, I think...
Does it mean Barbara's a new call winner?
What? Was my name mentioned?
And it was Brenner and Mann opposed? All right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the next item was, we had a discussion regarding the funding of the voter pamphlet for the primary, and the recommendation was to bring that to the full council for, for a discussion and guidance for the auditor.
Okay, was there a, was there a, any kind of a motion? I thought I remembered that we moved to provide the, the larger version.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, you're, you're correct. The, the, the recommendation of the committee was to provide the funding for a full voter pamphlet for the primary.
Okay, and you were moving it?
Oh, that, yeah.
Moving, and I so move.
Okay, so we have a motion to provide the, uh, the larger version of the, of the voter pamphlet for this fall?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, there is no further business from finance.
Okay, so we are at executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Uh, our executive is requesting confirmation of his appointment of Kim Youska to the Watkin County Appeals Board. How to entertain a motion?
Move.
Oh, move to confirm.
Yep.
Yeah, move to confirm, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have one item, uh, being introduced tonight. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Also move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have one more item of business, and that was, we had a budget priorities brainstorming session this morning, and the executive has asked that, that we make a motion, that we concur with those priorities. I have a, a few things that we added to that list. I jotted them down. I, one of them was, Mr. Weimer, you talked about wanting to, to look at our stormwater revenue side. Uh, we, Mr. Brown, you had a couple, uh, performance and benchmarks?
Correct.
And economic development.
Correct.
Yes.
Was there anything else that we wanted to add to that priority list that we, Ms. Brenner?
Well, I've brought it up for years, and I think it was Councilman Brown, or somebody who brought it up again today, about, um, making, I don't know, through the council or somewhere, ensuring that contracts that are put out for bid go to all the, um, all the local providers of those services instead of just to a list that's already made. And I don't know how to put it on there. Maybe you can say it better.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. So the, the, um, the suggestion was that we do two things to increase the competitiveness we get for local government bids. Uh, and one of the things that I'm a bit disappointed with is that some of the bids we get are only, we only get one bidder. And I think that, uh, we need more competitive bidding, so the idea was to have a proactive approach to make sure that every eligible bidder is aware of the opportunity to bid for, for county business, so that we get the maximum amount of responsible betters taking a shot at trying to win our business.
Yes, I'm trying to care. How, how does that fit into our budgeting priorities?
We talked about that in terms of the purchasing policies, as how do we drive the cost down for, um, particularly for the capital projects? By increasing the competitiveness of the bids we're getting for the capital.
I understand that. I'm just trying to plug, figure out how we plug that into our budget.
Because one of the, the suggestions that came up today is we may need to put a, a part-time staff position in place to do that.
And one other little part of that I wanna add is, I wanna see that purchasing policy stuff come through the budget process.
Okay, Mr. Executive?
Yes, I'd like to say is, I have no problem with, uh, council adding those as priorities onto the budget. I would ask, though, that the council, within the next two months, is to hold, uh, in committee, uh, those particular items, and, uh, do more than identify economic development, or so on and so forth. If the economic development program is something that we wish to, to go on, and we're planning on using EDI dollars with that under the state legislation, we have an obligation to talk to the cities, um, and confer with them on it. And, uh, my past experience with the EDI monies is going to the cities is, is they're quite protective, and, uh, of the sixty percent that, or seventy percent that they're currently using of that, or it's available to them. So, um, you know, uh, I'm not gonna go out on a huge limb on these things without the council doing a bit more work on it, and analyzing what you want to accomplish, um, but also understand, uh, both the positive and the potential negative impacts of that, and put that into more of a resolution form, so that it's just not something that, that I give a try to in the budget, that it's actually something that has some meat and some, uh, and carries some detail with it. So along with the economic development end of it, same would be on the water action plan, if the, the council chose, chooses to get in that and make, so what, what, what would end up being some big changes, uh, to our current programs, is, is I would ask that you would do some work on that and give us a bit more guidance to, uh, to consider. As you know, is, is it is the executive's budget that goes forward, have an obligation to balance that out as best possible with the work of the council and with the work of the staff, is to be able to make that happen, but, um, these particular policy ends of it have, uh, have some big impacts, and I would ask that the council, that the seven of you uh, know what you're specifically asking for before you task the administration with putting a lot of work, uh, into it. More than happy to help you with that and be engaged, uh, along with that particular process, but, but I need more than just those particular statements on those issues to, to truly make it happen.
Okay, Mr. Sidoo, then, Ms. Brenner?
You gotta look to the right once in a while, Barry.
He looks to the right all the time.
To the right all the time?
I'm always thinking he doesn't look this way.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I was gonna say that, you know, that's how I was thinking too, that economic development, it's just not a buzzword, or we should not really look at EDI money, and that's where everybody's attention is focused, that, that take the EDI money and use it in a different way. I, I, I think the EDI money is used, and there are good projects which we have used in the past, but in my mind, e- economic development is something that we should put it in forefront. In some way, we have programs for everything in our budget. Spend, what, hundred fifty, two hundred million dollars a year, right? And I'm saying that we should find two percent, three percent of that money that actually drives our county for next ten, twenty years to create that congenial environment for business growth and, and revenue growth, because the payback will be big. So I would like to propose that we should not think only in terms of, okay, how are we gonna use EDI money, or other cities have to agree to. I think we should find resources within the county budget that somehow, on so, I'm not saying they put two million dollars into it, but I'm saying somehow we should, first thing is recognizing this as a real task and real priority. The economic development is something the county administration, as well as county council, should do. Just recognizing that as a separate entity is the first step. The second step is, how do we fund that, and what the functions it would fund? And I wanna say that we have talked all day about it, that we have fragmented approach to this, and we're not getting the results we should be getting. We should rethink the whole thing right from ground up, the how we can do this better. So my proposal, uh, my suggestion to, to the administration and yourself is, is that think of something that this is something new program. Suppose we create a program for, to support some, uh, population with certain qualifications in the county, and we say that for this purpose, we will allocate up two hundred fifty thousand dollars, say, kids program or some other program. I wanna think about this as a county responsibility, that economic development is serious business, and we should create a line item and create a budget for that. I don't know how, I don't know that, but I have in my mind what my expectations are.
Okay, and what I'm asking is, is that your expectations
Yes.
meet the other six expectations?
Yes.
Because I work, and we work on behest of the majority will of the county council. And your view may be different than
Yeah.
other people's views up there, and, you know, I've got my own
Sure.
views as it relates to economic development, and, and I've been on, um, the administrative side of it for seventeen years in Watkin County, and I, you know, I somewhat have some opinions of what works and what hasn't worked, uh, in the past, and what I believe will work in the future, so that's what I'm asking council members to do, is, is you folks have this, uh, have this policy discussion, and we're in a spot right now, is if we're gonna spend a million dollars on it, we're either gonna take the million dollars from a program that we already have going, or we're gonna find new revenue for it, or we're gonna use money that through this policy, we're somewhat, I think, getting to the point is, is that we're planning on using on our infrastructure issues. Those are questions that you need to answer, because it's not a, it's not a piling on at this particular time without having a consequence at the backside, and that's where, from a policy decision, if we're gonna go into a brand-new program, or really augment a program by hundreds of thousands of dollars, is, is you folks need to make that decision on where that's coming from. And as I said, I'm looking forward to working with you on it.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, 'cause I'm not sure I'm there. What I was thinking is starting off with sending our, what we want, what we think would be helpful for future projects and stuff to the, um, EDI board, and see what they think. I mean, they're kind of, they're all business people, and, and they might have some pretty strong opinions. I'd like to know more about that.
We're, we're gonna solve it tonight, that's why.
No, but I was thinking start that way. I don't know.
To, uh, hold some meetings concerning it. And that's just one of the issues. I mean, we're, we're focusing on economic development, but whether it be the water action plan, um, uh, other aspects of it, if the council, uh, you know, chooses to put a division of Watkin County Government together that considers metrics, uh, you know, those are things, is, is that you need to, you need to make decisions in terms of the policy, and, and put something together and get a majority of vote on in terms of moving that to what specifically you'd like to move forward with it. Some things that I'll probably put into the budget, but if you, if you wanna go well beyond with what we're going on right now, is, is I would ask that the council have some serious discussions in the next sixty days, so that it could influence uh, my decisions moving forward with the budget.
Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I don't, I don't know that this suggestion requires a, a reprioritization or a reallocation of funds, but I think as long as we're gonna vote on it and, uh, say what our priorities are, I've always felt like definitely critical infrastructure issues, that's a key element of county government, but also public safety is a key one, and that may sound somewhat ironic, since I haven't been supportive of the jail, but public safety encompasses a whole bunch of stuff, not just the jails, sheriffs, the deputies, the vehicles, the prosecutors. And it's not listed in the budget priorities, and I know that is a priority for you and for everybody else. It's two-thirds of our general fund roughly goes to public safety-related departments, but I think it's important that we put it in the list, and the, just, just public safety, you know, that's, I just, that's one of our most important jobs, and one detail around that is, I, I'm interested in staffing levels of sheriff's deputies. Just over the years, when I first got on, we had four frozen positions, and then we eliminated a couple of positions, and then we added some back, and I'm actually don't even know how many there are right now, and what, you know, the ideal number is, but, um, that's my comment, that if we're gonna vote on this, I would wanna add one number that just says, "Public Safety." And the part about the number of sheriff's deputies is just, for your information, for Tyler, just to maybe get us that information.
If I may, on the sheriff's deputy, just as a matter of information, it's a good time to pass it forward, is, is that during the last budget process, Sheriff and I made a commitment that once he could get fully staffed, and if we had what I felt, uh, reasonable revenue to get the one position that we're down right now.
We're down one, okay.
I've authorized him to put the budget amendments, uh, together for your consideration. You'll probably see it here in another month for him to fill that position.
Oh, okay, well, there you have it.
Based on, based on the results of the last years and our first quarter results, financial results, um, I felt that it would appropriate that we would, that we would be able to do that.
Okay, great. See, I knew you prioritized public safety.
I still want it in there.
Yeah, yeah, I still want it in there, too.
Okay.
That's all I want, just one, number eight, public safety. If we're voting on it, I'm not asking you to change your budget priority list, I'm just saying what we're voting on, we just added a couple. I wanna add this one as well.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I was really proud of the council today for the discussion regarding the economic development, predominantly because, you know, government's role is typically, um, to, to talk about how you raise money from citizens and how you spend that money on their behalf. To, to, to go into the discussion about how do we use that, uh, to move forward and raise the average wage and raise the average standard of living by providing more opportunity. I just, I was, um, really pleased and really honored, and I just appreciate that from those of the council today.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the, uh, suggestion that we work on this in, in committee, 'cause this seems like a really awkward, we can, just one at a time, saying, well, I want, this is my priority, this is my priority. We haven't yet collectively, even before the, the meeting this morning, we haven't collectively, as a council, discussed anything about the budget. Um, I, I would like to see us do that more in the finance committee and, and, or any of these committees, but I also just think that, um, we do biennial budgeting, and, and Olympia, you have longer sessions in a budget year. We're not really accounting for the, the workload and the time that the council, the responsibility that council has. I think we should, thinking long-term, you know, this is, this is maybe one of the reasons, one of the, uh, situations where we, we might have to meet more often in budget years versus non, the first years of the biennium, to get a proactive role in collectively talking about what our priorities are and, and what we want the budget to look like. Rather than kind of just individually, it's kinda like, look, this morning, like, you know, you're Santa Claus, and we're going there telling them what we want for Christmas, individually, rather than getting together and working as a, as a legislative body, so.
Ms. Brenner?
We used to meet every other, every week, rather, and I really do, you know, we're gonna be getting done before then with the, um, the comp plan, and I do think we should meet more often on the budget, and I really do think that it should be, you're gonna like this part, Jack, I really do think it should be presented to us much sooner. You know, our charter says it's gotta be no... You know, our charter says it's gotta be no later than, and we always get it on that last day. I want to get it way sooner than that, so there.
Any other discussion on the motion? We've added some priorities that, uh, I think it's fair to say that these are things that we do need to work on and get consensus or get some majority agreement up here, um, and take that on over the, the, over the summer. Any more discussion?
One more, I got one more.
Yeah.
I, I also think we shouldn't do this tonight and, and just, 'cause I do think there's some really important things that we might want to talk about. Have one, two weeks, I, I'm ready to move on it in two weeks if we have it in committee, and we talk about, you know, more specifics about what we want. Sounded like, it sounded really good today, except like, for instance, the one about we're gonna, we're gonna get costs back for all of the stuff we're doing, and we hardly ever do that, so I would like to go into that a little bit more, rather than the way it's stated.
Mr. Executive?
We're going to be sending a message out to the department heads related to the budget, and it's typical that we have, um, you know, the budget message or the budget priorities with it. Truthfully, though, if we want to wait two weeks on it, we'll go about our business. I think we have the majority of it taken care of, and we can send your final document out, um, uh, when, when you get to it, uh, if you would, i- if you're gonna concur with, Ms. Brenner, with postponing it. Just to let you know is, is that we're, we're on track, and, uh, we've got an amazing and a tremendous amount of work to do between now and, now and then, but this is not necessarily mission-critical, um, for tonight. It's kind of like a comp pla, and I shouldn't say it's like a comp plan, 'cause it doesn't have the force of law with it, it's, this is just setting policy direction for, um, for the departments in terms of them putting their budgets together and give them an idea of where we're at, what we're trying to do with the, uh, you know, ma, maintenance of the general fund and so on and so forth, so that their expectations are within a bandwidth of where we're putting it, so, um, whatever you prefer to do will be fine.
Were you making a motion?
Um, that was a suggestion, I would rather wait and have one more meeting with the council members where we can.
That would require a motion to hold.
Oh, I moved to, I moved to, is table, date specific, I moved to table till two, in, in two weeks, and have, have it on the agenda as a meeting, maybe committee the whole meeting during that day.
Do we have a second?
Sorry, I'm not clear what we're tabling.
Instead of voting on this tonight.
The motion to accept the priorities. Or to not accept, but to concur.
Yeah, confirm the priorities, and I would.
I set, your motion's to table, and I second your motion to table.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Discussion on, to table? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that what I heard today, this discussion in the morning, I don't think anybody was, excuse me, any was opposed to all the policy, all the priorities you have presented. I don't think there's any opposition to that. So even if we wait for two weeks, you have a message from council is that we agree with what priorities you have put in. The only thing missing is that we want to add a few more things to that, uh, like we, yeah, so that's, that's what I'm saying. So even if we table it for two weeks, you can still go ahead and keep going with your work, because there's nothing glaring that, oh, no, we don't want this.
That's true.
That's what I wanted to say.
There's nothing that says.
Yeah, so there's nothing really is stopping or taking any time away from your planning process. You can continue with that, and once we have some discussion, then we'll see what we can more present to you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously.
Just a point of order, I, I think it's a point of order. Where are we gonna discuss it next time, in finance?
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole?
I think.
I just, I didn't hear that as part of the motion.
Well, I, that's what I said, I'd like it discussed in committee of the whole, but that wasn't part of my motion, you're right. Can we do, can we, should we vote on that? Okay.
Okay, so, uh, moving on to committee reports, there was no other committees that met today, so other items of business, we'll go down this way.
Yeah, one, uh, item, uh, yesterday, the Lake Wachem joint, whatever it's called, policy group met, uh, and there was a pretty interesting discussion about funding for the homeowner improvement program, um, and they were kind of looking for answers, and I said, since I was the only member of the county there, that, uh, I wasn't going to give them any, so we're trying to bring that forward to, um, have that discussion in probably natural resources at a surface water work session, 'cause, uh, that's another program where the city of Bellingham is currently chipping in about two hundred thousand dollars a year, and we're only chipping in twenty or twenty-five, and, uh, there's some discussion about equity whence the program gears up and is able to spend that amount of money. So it will be coming at you soon.
No business?
No business.
Um, I just wanted to, every year, there's the Woods Tour, um, put on by the Women in Timber, and I don't think I've ever missed a year in the last thirty-three years we've had it, but some council members have not been on the Timber Tour, and it's the most educational, amazing, um, way to understand better how environmental the, most of the loggers are in Wachem County and the foresters, um, whatever, however they're, uh, connected to, to logging industries. And what's, I mean, there were amazing people, there are people from Western that come, and it, it's not only you come once, every time they have it, it's a whole different a, aspect of the industry, and it, it is, I mean, they have the, this woman from, or this staff person from the United States Forestry Service, she's, and she just sent me a whole bunch of stuff from her presentation, I'm gonna definitely share with you guys. Just amazing numbers and, and data that, uh, support things that people don't even under, who, who aren't in the industry, don't even understand, oh, Forrest was there, Forrest was there, yeah, and, uh, Mark was there, and it was nice that staff would, yeah, oh, John was there, of course, John was there. You know, that, it, it's kind of neat that staff is coming and, and getting more, you know, educated and understanding of, of different aspects of, of the forestry industry, but it would also, they would love it if, if council members, some who have not been at all, would, would come, so, uh, it's just an amazing event, and they feed you this wonderful lunch, um, at the Van Dyke's house, Van Dyken's house, and, um, it was so packed this year, they actually ran out of food, which was a first, I've never seen that happen before, but back to, it, it's just so important and such a different aspect of the forestry industry, so I recommend it.
If I may, Ms. Brenner, I completely concur with what you just said, I, I think it's an excellent tour. I particularly liked seeing.
Yeah, you've been.
Yeah, I've been, and the last time, we had a very detailed tour of a long, a multi-generational forestry families, multi-generational approach to planting and harvesting, it was very interesting.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna say who else's been, 'cause then I, it would, it would imply who hasn't been, and I, I just wanted to put that out for you.
Okay, we seem to have also migrated into council member updates, so.
Oh, well, it was county.
So if you have business or.
Staff was there, it must be business.
Okay, that's enough roll call for the Woods Tour.
Am I on updates?
Yes.
Anything you want.
Okay, I, uh, there's a lot of, lot of cool stuff this, this week. I thought I saw Dan Probst out there, the Mountain Runners did their forty-whatever-hour run from Bellingham up to the summit and back, and, uh, I want to congratulate them for that and for encouraging people coming and visiting our community for doing that, but one of my favorite things, my wife was reading the posts, and at one point, uh, Dan put something up like, uh, "We're at Acme, we're almost home, only twenty-five miles to go." They probably did in an hour, and, and, I don't know, uh, the, uh, the Stomish was this week, uh, this week, weekend out at the Lummy Nation, and they invited, I didn't get to go on the tour, but they invited us all to do the, uh, the Quina Mile Run, um, which was fun, they got hundreds of kids out there, it's kind of a fitness thing, have them set goals, and, uh, I ran that, and I would like to thank Mayor John Muchler for pulling me along till the very end when I passed him. And he took off really fast and dragged me along, so. It was fun, it was, it's, it's a great event, and, and it's, you don't have to run, you can walk. It's, 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 it's a neat thing, it'll, they'll do it again, it was the fourteenth annual this year, they'll do it again.
They used one, too, that's some.
Well, I didn't win.
You didn't win?
Oh.
Chairman Blue declared me the world's fastest Wachem County council member.
Mr. Sedu, anything?
Well, I, yes, I do. I think I just want to remind everybody that, uh, June twenty-first is the International Yoga Day, uh, declared by United Nations, and, uh, I spent last four days, uh, last weekend, attending a seminar at UBC up in Vancouver, uh, on a yoga seminar and mind and body, and, and it's been presented by ISHA Foundation, I-S-H-A, ISHA Foundation, and the leader of that is, it's a Ashram in India, I visited that in 2014, and actually that person is addressing United Nations on June twentieth. And why I bring it up is, is that, uh, one of the biggest issue in America is health issue, and this is that we totally ignore the health, well-being of your own, and then we go to the doctor or get the pills, and we think that taking pills is gonna fix you. Actually, it is your own body and your own mind's gonna fix you, and you're gonna save tons of money, but we don't believe in savings, we believe in spending. So I really recommend that, that people should actually learn more about yoga, it's, it's, it's nothing to do with any religion or any cult or any other thing, it's just you and your body, and, and I think that people should pay more attention to that and, uh, and lower their stress level. So I, I thoroughly enjoyed four days, uh, attending that seminar. It was fun, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back down here, do we have any council member updates?
Nope.
Mr. Mann?
No.
I have two, and one is I also, uh, well, I was out at the Stomish Festival, which I highly encourage anybody to do, and the other one was, I was at the Star Park Construction, um, which was the, uh, you get a free T-shirt when you go. Star Park was the construction of a very large child's playground in Ferndale. I particularly liked it for a couple of reasons, they went to the schools first and asked the kids what they wanted, uh, the kids designed the park, they didn't bought, bought the materials, the parents and the kids built the park.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, that has an added, a couple of benefits, uh, one is apparently is, um, according to the company that, that provides it, the vandalism rate drops like a rock because it's the kids' park, and they police themselves, 'cause they built it, uh, and clearly it builds a very strong sense of community, and you end up with a much better park at a much lower cost, so I'd like to see more of them, so.
What was the other thing?
He already said it.
Okay, well, with no other business before the council, we are adjourned.